Go ahead and begin.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, it is Wednesday, December 23rd at about 5:02 PM. This is a special meeting of the Palo Alto City Council. I'd like to call us to order if the clerk would please take the role.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Cormac.
Here.
Vice Mayor DuBois. Councilmember Phil Sett.
Here.
Mayor Fine.
Here.
Councilmember Ness.
Here.
Councilmember Koo.
Here.
Councilmember Tanaka. Six present.
I think we have seven. Councilmember Tanaka just joined.
Oh, great. Seven present.
Cool. Thank you so much. Okay, I thought last week we had our last meeting of the year, but we have one more late breaking but super important item. Before we get to that, I'd just like to open the session to public communications, oral communications. Anybody who wishes to speak to an item which is not on the agenda may do so. Please raise your hand as a member of the public if you wish to do so, and we'll give you two minutes each.
Welcome, members of the public, to the December 23rd special meeting of the Palo Alto City Council. If you'd like to speak under oral communications, please raise your hand in the Zoom app or press star nine on your phone. Mayor Fine, I see one speaker, Rebecca Eisenberg. Rebecca, you have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. First, I want to say that I think Aram James may want to speak again. I'm texting him right now. But because he often has trouble being recognized. So, three quick things, four quick things. First is, yay, I'm so glad that the that the attempt at breaching the settlement agreement that you all so wisely struck with Foothills Park failed. And that it was confirmed that the majority of us in Palo Alto always wanted to open up the park to people of all, you know, from everywhere, despite their religion, or sex, or gender, or color of their skin, or ethnicity. The park is open to all, and it's beautiful, and I'm so proud and happy. Second thing is that, yay, I'm so glad there's another meeting. Third is that it's never, I can't help but want to remind you that, as far as I could tell, and in my research, and speaking with other lawyers, and that it really looks like it is possible for you all to put a emergency measure on the ballot in order to require that just only the biggest and most profitable and largest and in the best financial position employers and businesses located in our city to contribute to our, you know, the city's bottom line. And I really hope you'll look into that in the new year. And lastly, I hope in the spirit of transparency, even though 2020 is soon to be behind us, it wasn't really a good year for transparency, that you all will continue to push for important measures like obtaining that report of what happened to the women by downtown streets and getting some final justice and and importantly missed evidence regarding to the spate of violence that happened at the hands of our police departments. Thank you for considering. Bye.
Oh, and Aram. Thank you, Rebecca. Mayor Fine, I do not see Aram James with his hand raised at the moment.
Okay, thank you so much. Let's please move to item one. This is the substantial amendment to the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG Fiscal Year Program. It's an action calendar item where we are recommending funding allocations for FY21 and some amendments for the operating budget in the CDBG budget. Does staff have a report, and then we'll go to members of the public?
Great, thank you, Mayor Jonathan Leitz, Director for Planning and Development Services. I'm joined by Aram Makbul, who oversees our CDBG program. We'll get right underway here. So, as the City Council knows, Palo Alto is an entitlement city and does receive federal funding through the CDBG program. And that money is used to improve conditions in our community that benefit low and very low income persons. Part of the requirements to be eligible are developing a five-year consolidated plan and an annual action plan. The City Council took action on both of those items in June, and so you've done that part. Now, what happens in the course of the year, sometimes there's some changes that need to be made to our program. Many of those changes can be done administratively and are called minor amendments. Where we do have a substantial amendment, then we need to come back before the City Council, as we were doing this evening, to receive City Council approval. We have two actions recently that are eligible or qualify for a substantial amendment. The first one is we're receiving some money back that we had dedicated to Ulta Housing. They are unable to use about $150,000 CDBG dollars, and so that's going to come back to the city. So, we need to reallocate that. The second triggering event is the second installment of some CARES Act funding, which is used to help those who are impacted by COVID or activities that help support a response to those that are impacted by COVID. So, this evening, you've got about $600,000 to redistribute through our our annual plan. 150 from the prior nonprofit and the 450 new dollars. So, we've done some outreach and consulted with our the nonprofit entities that typically are involved in these types of matters as well as more broadly. And we received two requests, one from Ravenswood Family Health Network. They are proposing to, they want to order a new van, medical van, that will help with vaccinations, COVID-19 vaccinations, and they're seeking about $350,000 through the city for CDBG funds. A second request is from Life Moves. They are expanding their homeless shelter hours, and that has an associated cost that is eligible for CDBG funding, and that request is coming in at about $50,000. The balance of the funds were not identified for any programs at this time. And there is a component of the program that allows municipalities to pay for the administrative costs of running the CDBG program. It is limited. But for this amount of money, what's remaining is the city is eligible for roughly $150,000 to support our administrative costs, and that's for staffing, but also consultant services that we use. When the first CARES Act came through, we declined, as you may recall, accepting any funds to support our administrative operations so that we can get it to the nonprofit agencies that were seeking that funding at that time. This time around, there is some capacity for us to take some of that money and reduce the city's support for the CDBG program. When all of that is allocated for, there's about $43,000 that are left, and it's our intent to go out in January with another notice of funding availability so that we can see if there's other nonprofit entities that would be eligible to qualify for that additional funding. Timeline, after this evening, we will submit our paperwork to HUD, and we would expect that agreements would follow in February and March. This, in the interim, nonprofit agencies would be allowed to proceed, understanding that, you know, there's a process where we still need to receive the money before we can commit to it, but that's pretty typical of how that works. This slide summarizes the recommended actions to council, 350 to roughly 350 to Ravenswood for the mobile clinic, about 50,000 to Life Moves to support the homeless shelter expansion, about 150,000 to support the administrative operation of the program, and the balance going to be carried over to next year. This is the motion that the City Council would make if you wanted to support the staff recommendation in your report. And with that, I will end the presentation and answer any questions that you may have.
If I could just make one follow-up comment.
Please.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Director Leitz. I just really want to express appreciation to the council for coming together quickly on this item. And also, in particular, with Supervisor Semidian, bringing to our attention the downstream needs as it relates to getting vaccination into the community and making us aware of the time sensitivity and the potential benefit of the council acting quickly on this item before you. So, thank you to the council for that, and also to Supervisor Semidian for bringing it to our attention and really building on our relationship to be able to engage us in being a part of this solution on next steps for the community, and really for Ravenswood to be prepared to act on this. And Executive Director Buata and I have been in communication over the last few days to ensure that pieces of the puzzle are coming together, and we're doing our part. Thank you.
Thanks, City Manager Shakata. Yeah, absolutely. This is a late-breaking item for the council. We thought we had our last meeting last week. But one more because we have some additional funding and some unmet needs, especially with regards to vaccination. Before we go to members of the public, I just want to invite Supervisor Semidian, if you have any comments or ideas to share.
No comments at this time. Mr. Mayor, thank you all very much. I'm happy to respond to questions if there are any. I'm just here as a resource.
Thank you so much, sir. We really appreciate it. Okay, let's please go to members of the public who may wish to speak on this item, and then we'll return to council.
Thank you, Mayor Fine. If any members of the public would like to speak on item one on tonight's agenda, please raise your hand in the Zoom app or press star nine on your phone. The first speaker is William Ross. William, you have two minutes to address the council. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. I first like to express thanks to staff member Aram Makbul for advancing information concerning this action, which would normally take place on a with more notice. I wish to advance the concept that, under existing rules of HUDD, that the unaccounted-for funding amount of 43,290 could be allocated to the city fire department to enhance EMS, ALS staffing. In last reporting period, medical units 66, 63, and 61 all had numerous response with respect to homeless individuals. As you know, the department's underfunded and understaffed, and periodically, there is a lack of use with respect to EMS, ALS transport units. Also presently, all shifts of the department have not been vaccinated. The phrase is, this fund can only be used to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the spread of COVID-19. I would respectfully request that as an emergency allocation, that that amount be allocated back to the city fire department to meet increased transit capability under EMS/ALS criteria specifically related to the homeless, and that would facilitate the availability of those units to otherwise respond for COVID-19 responses in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, William. The next speaker is Rebecca Eisenberg. Rebecca, you have two minutes.
Thank you. First of all, I sent you all an email because, to explain that the reason that Ulta has to give back the money doesn't make any sense as written. As written, it said that Ulta wasn't able to find a contractor willing to receive, that's the word it was used, a living wage, aka prevailing wage. I think we are entitled to a better explanation of why Ulta can't find a contractor who is willing to agree to the requirements of the law. Second, I strongly oppose the money that is given back to be used for things like consultants or administrative expenses, given how much our community is suffering, how much the small businesses are suffering, given that we have as many as 500 homeless people and zero shelter beds. I think that we know about existing problems that require solutions enough that we shouldn't spend money on consultants right now. We know how to solve homelessness. The way to solve homelessness is to house people. So, let's use that money for what it's supposed to go for. Additionally, possibly some of the money could be used for already existing staff, maybe if should they need additional resources to fill out those applications I keep begging, urging you to fill out, to receive money that the state is offering through the CARES Act, such as, as you know, the state gave away more than $600 million, including to Santa Clara County. Thank you Supervisor Semiden for making sure your staff applied to that. I know you received, what, like $35 million to buy a building to convert it to housing? Mountain View received 12.5 million, et cetera. You need to apply for the money that is available. And finally, we don't need to pay for more testing. We need to make Palo Alto Medical Foundation and Stanford conform to the law and provide testing for free, as Supervisor Semiden has worked so hard to make sure that they're legally required to do, yet they still don't do. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. The next speaker is Ashley Peel. Ashley, you have two minutes to address the council. You can begin.
Hi, council. Thank you. This is Ashley Peel with Ravenswood Family Health Network, and some of you know I've been based at the Mayview Clinic for many years now. First, thank you for coming together short notice. We really appreciate it, and our mobile clinic application. I just wanted to point out that this will be a huge thing for our organization, and I think for the city of Palo Alto and North Santa Clara County as a whole. We plan to do COVID testing and COVID vaccinations when they're available to our patients, who are primarily vulnerable residents of the community. But this will also be a longer-term investment as well. You know, this mobile clinic has, you know, a seven-year lifespan, hopefully at minimum, and so we hope to continue to use it to pursue medical and dental services for low-income and homeless in the community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Mayor Fine, that was the last speaker on this item.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you to our three speakers. Let's please return to council, open it up to a round of questions and comments. Please hit your hand.
I couldn't figure out how to raise my hand, so am I allowed to say something?
Please, and if you'd please identify yourself to those who are listening on the radio or otherwise.
Okay. I'm Luisa Buata, and I'm the CEO of Ravenswood Family Health Network, and thank you very much for having this special meeting this evening. We really appreciate it. We have been working with your staff to develop a proposal for a mobile clinic and actually was prepared to order it. And as soon as you had approved this on your December 14th calendar, it takes about four months to build it. In the interim, we will continue to go ahead and work on testing and and also vaccines, getting ready to do vaccines. But the mobile clinic will be very helpful for us to be able to go beyond the fixed site of the clinic to be able to go other places and provide those services. We also will have, it'll be used for both dental and medical, and so it does have a long-term use. It's not just for this moment, but it will be very helpful. And we do have a woman-owned company that's building them, and they're ready for us to send in our 60% down payment as soon as we know the funding is there. Palo Alto Medical Foundation, we are working with them to pay the difference because it's about a half a million dollars. And they, every year, have given us funding for different projects, usually capital projects. So, we're able to pay for the whole mobile clinic, which is about a half a million. And with your support, we'll be able to do this. So, I really appreciate your coming out this evening before the holidays. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Buata. Councilmember Ness, then Vice Mayor DuBois.
So, thank you very much, Luisa. I don't want to do anything to your last name, so I won't pronounce it. I think it's Buata. Am I correct? Yes. So nice that you're here. Couple of things that I heard, one from the last speaker. This is mobile, so it does not stay in Palo Alto for a long period of time. Is that correct?
We'll probably, we have to park it in a secure location, so it may not be parked necessarily in Palo Alto for that reason unless we can find we have land in East Palo Alto where we own it, so we don't have to pay rent to park it. So, we'll probably park it there behind a fence, but use it in Palo Alto. Yes.
Okay, so it will actually come into the city or Palo Alto can use it? Which way is it? I'm not sure I understand.
So, we will be using it in Palo Alto. It's also available, it could be used elsewhere, but the goal is to use it in Palo Alto.
And tell me, you said it's both COVID testing and vaccine, and that is, and this is primarily for for the, for the people that you see in your clinic. Is that correct?
That's our first priority, but because vaccines, we are going to participate in community-wide vaccine when it's available, because we get our vaccine through Santa Clara County Public Health. And so, the first tier, of course, are frontline health workers, long-term care. There's a priority. But when it comes to community vaccines, we will be working ideally with other community agencies who do this. So, for example, you know, if Stanford or I guess El Comino Hospital works in Mountain View, but if Stanford wanted to help and do a pop-up vaccine clinic, you know, at the parking lot at the Superior Court on a Saturday, we would work together with them.
Okay, so long-term, you're probably going to be using this first for testing, then for vaccines, and then way in the future, when we might get back to normal for dental and medical.
Correct, yes. That's probably a good way of looking at it, although we are providing in-person care. And the only difference is that we, for people who might be COVID-positive, we try to do it remotely, or we do it in tents. So, even though we might have the mobile clinic there, we might be providing care just outside of it, and the staff would have all their equipment inside. So, it's gonna, we're gonna be using a kind of a mixed model. Because actually, when we do testing, the staff come in the mobile clinic, they have everything there, but they step out to actually do the test, because people drive up and they do the tests in the car.
So, and what's the relationship with Mayview? So, once Mayview, you know, being part of that location where the courthouse is, will that, will Mayview and this van operate both at the same time or not?
So, the Mayview site, we acquired the Mayview Health Centers in April. The Mayview site will continue to provide in-person care. It's, we're in the process of doing alterations to make it more COVID-safe right now. So, it will be providing the same kind of medical care we've been providing all along, which is, you know, from womb to tomb, we see everybody and provide general primary care, and we'll continue to do that in person. But for those people who just specifically come for testing, we can't really put a tent up there outside. So, we'll use the mobile clinic, and then people will drive through for the testing.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. I appreciate your answers.
Thanks, Councilmember Ness. I want to go next to Supervisor Semiden.
Thank you, and I apologize if I've cut off any of your council members.
Don't worry.
But Councilmember Ness's questions prompted me to realize that perhaps a little context and background would be helpful in framing some of the questions that follow. Many of the council members will recall that for decades, Mayview Health Clinics have served Palo Alto and other portions of the North County, and predominantly for lower-income residents. And there is a clinic space that is literally over my shoulder as, on the other side of the wall here in the North County courthouse. Ms. Buata will correct me if I'm wrong, but there's also clinic space in Mountain View and in Sunnyvale. So, those three clinics have for decades provided healthcare in the North County to lower-income residents. For a variety of reasons, mostly having to do with federal funding mechanisms, that became untenable. And the solution to that problem was for Ravenswood, which has a long history in South San Mateo County, to acquire the Mayview Clinics, and they now continue to operate. And if you went outside and looked at the sign, you would see it says, "Mayview," you know, "Ravenswood Community Health Clinic Facility," or some such language like that. So, the fact that it's not sort of widely understood speaks volumes about how well Ravenswood has just seamlessly transitioned. The Mayview name is still there. The services are still being provided. Palo Alto is a special case because, in an effort to upgrade the facility, Ravenswood has undertaken a substantial renovation, which is still underway. Timing's not ideal, but that's where we are. And what I should also add, that some of you will know, but many of you again may not, is that there has been a historic challenge with, historically, there has been a challenge with providing healthcare to folks of modest means in the North County, because while the county has three hospitals, none of them are in the Fifth Supervisory District. While the county has eight to 10 primary care clinics, none of them are in the Fifth Supervisory District. While the county has 12 county pharmacies, none of them are in the Fifth Supervisory District. So, the obvious question then is, how do you get services to people who need them? And the answer is by partnering with community clinics like Ravenswood, formerly known as Mayview, like Planned Parenthood, as we did to some extent with testing during the run-up to push more testing out in the community. So, the reason I'm in your call, folks, is that I thought there were some lessons learned from the struggle on testing. One of them was that thinking somebody else is going to step up and get the job done is a risky proposition. So, I have been on the phones speaking to folks at Ravenswood Community Health Clinics, at Stanford University, at Palo Alto Medical Foundation, to say, hey, what's your thinking about how vaccines are going to be provided to the entire community? So that we're all assured that, when the time comes, all the pieces fit together, and we're not left wondering who's going to do what the way we were with testing, quite frankly. I spoke to Ms. Buata last Friday, said, hey, can you tell me what you're up to? She shared her plans for the future. Said she had been looking forward to the mobile van moving forward, but that council simply hadn't had a chance to get to it before its last council meeting. I said, well, how does that impact the delivery of the van, if at all? She said, well, can't order it until we've got a commitment of funds, so we'll wait for the council on, I believe it's January 11th for the first meeting. I then texted your manager, Mr. Shakata, and said, hey, just a heads up, not sure people realize this, but if it means that you can accelerate the delivery of a van that will be providing vaccinations to people from and in Palo Alto, is that worth a special meeting? So, I apologize. I may be the reason you all are missing out on an hour here of your holiday season. But Mr. Shakata apparently checked in with you all, and you all said, yeah, let's at least have that conversation. And so, I apologize for that lengthy riff, Mr. Mayor. It's a lot of words for somebody who said he was just here to answer questions, but I thought the background might be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Semiden. Thank you for the comments, and of course, thank you for writing hurt on us and making sure that our county, especially in the North, stays safe. We truly appreciate it. Vice Mayor DuBois, then Councilmember Cormac.
Yeah, a question for Joe Semiden and then a question for staff. So, what's the current plan for seniors getting vaccines? I know in some other states, they've already been registering them with I know in some other states, they've already been registering them with companies like Walgreens and CVS, but I haven't seen that happening here yet. So once we get beyond um, essential personnel, do we know, like, how are senior, seniors in particular, going to get access to the vaccine?
I think what I'd like to do is get back to you in writing uh, with something from folks at the Public Health Department. Um, I I know you know I'm not the public health officer, uh, and I just, I don't want to be um inaccurate in any observations I might make, since it seems to be changing literally day-to-day, as you have no doubt observed. But um, let me, uh, if if it's acceptable to you, uh, Councilmember DeBois, Vice Mayor DeBois, I'll I'll get something in writing that we can send to your city manager, Mr. Chikada, and let him share it with council.
Yeah, sounds great. And again, my impression is we're already lagging perhaps some other states in in some of this planning. So a question for staff, I actually want to shift to Life Moves Hotel de Zink. I saw that forty-three thousand of their request wasn't eligible. And uh, I wondered what we could do to, is there a way we could help them get conformant? Maybe support them supporting more homeless with COVID response?
We we certainly can do, uh, reach out to them and and find out whether uh, are some more opportunities for them, especially if we, uh, with this new um, no fa- notice of funding opportunity in in January, where they might be able to um, identify some qualifying expenses.
What was the, what was the issue with the hazard pay, which is not allowed?
Right.
Okay. Yeah, so again, I'm highly supportive of of the motion. You know, that was really, the only concern was, should we be doing more to support Life Moves Hotel de Zink? Should we consider maybe dialing back the city's hundred forty thousand to dial out back by forty thousand and wait and see if maybe there's more that should be done there? But curious what my colleagues think. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Fine. Good evening, everyone. I want to take a moment to thank the staff for a really comprehensive and very clear report. Um, maybe just, if you could just put slide six back up, just to orient everyone on the the choices, that'd be helpful. Um, there's an undeniable need for COVID-related healthcare for our most vulnerable people. Um, it looks like that we'll be serving with the the mobile van. They'll be serving about four hundred and eighty people who live in Palo Alto, and it looks like we'll also be serving four hundred and eighty people who uh, work in Palo Alto. Uh, once people uh, can come back to work, non-essential people. Um, and I'm also super excited about dental services. I know that's been a longtime desire um, at Mayview. Okay, so um, it did look like there, so the the money we're giving, we propose to give to Ravenswood comes from two pieces, that makes sense. The vice mayor has already reviewed the Life Moves um, issue. Um, I thought, I thought the staff's explanation of why now with the many changes and um, that it does make sense to reserve some of this money for administration, rather than tap our general fund, which we all know is um, is uh, definitely pressed. Um, but I think it's probably okay to have some funds set aside. It's similar to what we did in the budget process, which is to say we don't know everything now. Um, I am pleased to see that Life Moves, um, you know, is, um, has requested and received um, as much as we can provide, given those strictures here. So, look forward to supporting this motion. Let me just see if anyone else has their hand raised. Mr. Mayor, are you looking for a motion at this time?
I'm not seeing any other hands, so let's open it up to motions.
All right, then I'll go ahead and move the staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Cormac, seconded by Councilmember Niss. Uh, I'll let you both speak to it, and then I see a few other hands.
All right, um, I'm sorry we weren't able to get the, to this earlier, and I thank Supervisor Smitian for bringing it to our attention, and everyone for gathering for one, one more Zoom meeting. If we weren't on this Zoom meeting, I'm sure we'd be on another one. Um, and, you know, this has been such a difficult year. And um, you know, the uh, the difficulties will continue, um, but it's um, comforting to know that we'll be able to direct some of these funds to the people who need it.
Bravo, and thank you. Councilmember Niss.
Um, thanks. Thanks for making the motion, Councilmember. Uh, I wanted to say something too. I'm cer- certainly supporting the motion, but I also wanted to say something um, to support what Supervisor Smitian said. It is very frustrating to um, represent the North County. It is difficult to get resources here, and uh, very easy to to overlook what appears to be a much smaller segment overall, although every supervisor has the same number of constituents. Um, I think interacting with Ravenswood, with uh, the other clinics, with people understanding that these are here and they're extremely important to those people who need them, is is imperative. So as we go forth with this tonight, um, since I won't be sitting here next year, I hope you will all remember how difficult it is to keep those services coming. And it is terrific that the van will be here. We actually used to have a dental van at the county. I I won't even ask Joe about that, but that that seems to have disappeared. But there was a time when we had that. And uh, to just speak briefly about the dental, that's one of the things that makes the most difference in kids being able to go to school. Kids who have toothaches do not want to go to school, and there will come a time when kids go back to school again. So I am delighted that this is coming to us and providing really more uh, more support in the North County for for the health needs, and also for the public health long-term. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. Next, I have Councilmembers Tanaka, then Koo.
Yeah, just wanted to thank staff and also Supervisor Smitian for your, your guys' work on this. Uh, a few kind of quick questions. I guess the first one is for, I don't know if Molly's still on, but um, I think someone wrote in kind of questioning about whether there is sufficient notice for this meeting. Is there sufficient notice? I mean, have you, have you been able to check that out?
Yes, we, there's sufficient notice to take these actions tonight. Thanks.
Okay, great. Um, and then, uh, second question is, could the forty-three be, forty-three K be allocated for the fire department? And maybe, I don't know if we have anyone in the fire department, or maybe uh, the city manager could take that question.
Well, maybe I'll take a first cut at it and then um, open it up for others, but um, when we, so it may be possible that they may be eligible for the uh, some funding, um, provided it meets the program criteria. The challenge that we have tonight is that we don't have an application, and we don't have a means to take action on that request um, this evening. However, as I, as I mentioned in the presentation, we will do another notice of funding availability uh, in January, and we can certainly uh, talk to our colleagues over in the fire department and see if there might be some opportunities for them to uh, submit an application that could be considered uh, for for funding opportunities.
Yeah, I think there's been some brownouts. So do we, I mean, it's the same city, so do we actually have to get application from ourselves?
Yeah, we would, yeah, I mean, we would just, it's, there's a a process and and forms to fill out, and we could certainly collaborate and work with them. But um, yeah, we'd have to put together an application.
I see.
Something of a, we'll call it bureaucratic rules, but to the extent that we're operating with federal funds, with federal program rules under the Community Development Block Grant uh, program, we'll, we'll make sure that we're able to do so. And as to the earlier uh, question related to life moves, there are specific eligibility requirements for the program, and as such, we do need to make sure that the expenses uh, fit within the program guidelines. So we'll do that work between now and the next opportunity.
And and so, um, does every city get like the same amount of money, or how's the money allocated from these block grants? How do we get our share versus other cities? How does that happen?
Uh, that's great. Uh, I'm going to ask Aram McCall to um, tell us that we do not all get the same amount, but I, I have a suspicion, but I don't want to get it wrong. So Aram, if you could tell us your understanding of how money gets distributed among the different jurisdictions.
Hi, good evening, council members. Uh, I'm Aram. I oversee this program. So the, uh, this is a formula-based grant. The heart comes with, uh, comes up with a formula based on the population and the lower-income uh, population within the jurisdiction, and that's how they distribute, they come up with the allocations every year.
I see, okay.
For the cares, uh, for the cares allotment, uh, uh, it was more about the cases in the specific jurisdictions rather than the population. So the cases are more that jurisdictions were getting more uh, allocations.
Okay, that makes sense. And is it, is this um, the way it works? Is it like either spend it or you lose it type thing, or how how does it work, like?
So for the, uh, so uh, for the cares grant, we have to spend eighty percent of the uh, seven fifty that that is allocated to Palo Alto within the, within three years, which is by April twenty twenty-three. The rest of the twenty percent, we have to spend in the next three years. If we don't spend the eighty percent by the first three years, then we have to, they will recapture that grant. The remaining grant, not the one that we have already spent.
Well, I I think there's definitely a lot of need, so, and and the economy is pretty rough, so I think spending it makes a lot of sense, but I was just curious about uh, uh, how that worked. Okay. And um, I guess, uh, Luisa, a question for you, which is, um, and I like the questions that Councilmember Niss was asking. So um, and I just wanted to get a little bit more concrete about it. So how much of this service um, that this money will provide, how much of it's going to be um, in Palo Alto versus other cities? Can you, can you speak on that?
So, so the, the money is going to go for the purchase of the mobile clinic, and then the operations is is a separate. You know, we'll have to come up with the operational funds from any, you know, medical reimbursement and and other grants as we go forward. But our intention is primarily to use it, well, as as was mentioned, in uh, North Santa Clara County. In Palo Alto right now, it will be uh, be used primarily during the the COVID period. But we also know that there's a need for healthcare for the homeless. In Palo Alto, there are other, um, we, our facility in Mountain View probably can handle the healthcare for the homeless a little bit better. Um, but the the, we'll be using the mobile clinic for that. There, there used to be a mobile clinic that came north uh, to provide those services uh, from another health center that no longer does that. So we are wanting to ex, to use that for that purpose. That's our intention, is to be able to go where homeless people are to provide uh, both medical and dental services.
Okay, maybe, um, can you explain, like, how much, what percentage of the funding is coming from Palo Alto, do you know, for this?
So the, the, the total cost is approximately five hundred thousand. It's uh, so i- it's a, it's a little bit more than that, and three hundred fifty-four thousand would come from the CDBG grant. The rest of the money we are going to get from Palo Alto Medical Foundation.
Okay, okay.
And then we, we actually have to, you know, to to actually put all the, you know, the supplies, the equipment, all the smaller items. We'll, we'll be paying that either out of general, uh, our general fund, or other grants that we may receive.
Okay, and what percentage of the time is uh, this van going to be providing services to the folks here in Palo Alto?
So initially, two days a week, um, because it's also staffing, a staffing issue. We do have a a very large dental clinic in East Palo Alto, so we have a uh, um, twelve-year dental program. We're very familiar with doing it, so we would have to allocate one of our dentists for that service. And um, for healthcare for the homeless, that's a unique um, skill that providers have. So we would need to recruit a um, medical provider who uh, has, has the capacity to work with uh, homeless patients, so staffing right now, and and a driver. So we would have to recruit staff in order to be able to operate it. For testing, that's not a problem, because we, a driver could take it, park it, leave. And then we have testing nurses who are doing that now, and we would allocate time for them to come over and test at the Palo Alto courthouse.
So I guess I was looking for just a real simple answer, which is, uh, actually, may I can I finish my question on this?
Please, if it's quick.
Yeah, um, so what I was, we're looking for is just like, you know, X percent of the service hours are going to be in Palo Alto, right? That's what I was looking for, just roughly. I don't need the exact number, but like, what, of the service hours provided, I'm, what I'm trying to understand is, what percentage of the funding is from Palo Alto? What percentage of services is in Palo Alto? This is really what I'm trying to get at.
So, you know, some of those operational issues that we haven't entirely thought through, but I would say at least, you know, forty percent of the time, or two days a week, it'll be in Palo Alto. Whether or not it actually goes anywhere else the other days, right now, we are committing to do two days a week in Palo Alto. So, because, you know, we don't, usually mobile services aren't every day. They're not five days a week. So at least we know that we will be able to staff it two days a week. I'm not worried about that. It's always more challenging to have a mobile clinic operate um, five days a week.
So like, you, can you say roughly how, what percent of the service hours are in Palo Alto versus not in Palo Alto?
I think Ms. Buata mentioned two days a week in Palo Alto.
Yeah, so I mean, that, right now, the plan is that, that's a hundred percent.
That's a hundred percent, okay. That's all I need to know. That's all, that's all I need to know. Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
There, though, if I might note, uh, to the Councilmember's question, that because it is a mobile unit, it could be used elsewhere. So I wouldn't want to leave the impression that it's a, it's a commitment, that it would be a hundred percent in Palo Alto. I think we, we would expect and would want the grantee to have some flexibility on how it's deployed.
Well, I actually, I I think if every city gets a block grant, right, then I would think that it would be for us to make sure that the services are for the needy here in our city. So I would, I would hope that there's some, some level of commitment. I mean, if it's a hundred percent of that, if we're providing this amount of funds and, you know, the, a large portion of the funds, I mean, the service hours are being in R.C., that's great, right? But if if, if, you know, a hundred percent of the funds are from us, and, you know, only ten percent of the service hours are in our city, that's, that's a bit of a problem.
And I think there's also an argument to be made that a wealthy city like Palo Alto can help our neighbors. I'm going to go to Supervisor Smitian, and then Councilmember Koo.
Yeah, I think, not to confuse, hopefully to clarify, uh, Mr. Mayor and uh, I I think, uh, again, a a reminder that there is an operating clinic for Raven, uh, Ravenswood in Sunnyvale. There is an operating clinic for Ravenswood in Mountain View. Um, and Ravenswood has good relations with both of those two communities. Um, the particular uh, challenge for Palo Altons right now is that the clinic space that I pointed to a few minutes ago over my shoulder is shut down. So bringing a mobile clinic online means that Ravenswood has the ability to respond to Palo Altons in Palo Alto in a way that is more robust and immediate than if that van is not there. But the other piece of this, and this is how I got pulled into the conversation, uh, and I'll look to Ms. Buata to clarify or correct if need be, is that wh- what I didn't share with you earlier is that when the county's um, vaccine distribution plan was sent to the state of California on December first, as required by law, or by order, I should say, um, one of the provisions that the county's plan had to address was how is this going to be distributed? Meaning how will the vaccines that the county gets be distributed? And the answer initially from the county's uh, staff in their December first transmittal, sixty-page document, was that it would be distributed through the Santa Clara County Fairgrounds and nine county clinics. Now, as I mentioned earlier, none of those clinics are in Palo Alto. So my immediate concern as your county supervisor was, wait a minute, how are folks going to be able to get access to the vaccine if they're not covered by a provider? How are folks in our area going to be able to get access to the vaccine if they are not physically proximate to those nine county clinics in other parts of the county, or the county fairgrounds? I raised that issue at the board, uh, and the county staff said, ah, um, certainly not our intention to exclude the four hundred thousand people who live in uh, the Fifth Supervisory District, including thirty-seven thousand medical recipients who are typically lower income. Or, nor was it the intention, they said, to exclude the senior population, back to Vice Mayor DeBois's question, because my district, actually our district, forgive me, the fifth district has the largest population of folks who are over eighty, and the largest population of folks who are over uh, sixty-five. So, the point was, we, we needed to partner with community clinics, and the, the two that came to mind immediately were Ravenswood with its three facilities, now sort of two-plus uh, in um, Mountain View, Sunnyvale, and Palo Alto, and Planned Parenthood, if they're amenable, and they seem to be. But absent a, a facility like this, there is no place for the vaccine to be distributed in Palo Alto that you could point to and say, well, that's where it could happen, let alone that's let alone that's where it will happen. You will all recall that we ran into this same challenge when we were talking about testing, and kudos to your council and to the city, because what I said at the time was, the way for me to be effective in talking to county staff about getting testing rolled out is to say, hi, we're the city of Palo Alto. Here we are. We've got a facility, and we've got some staff people who will help you with logistics, and we can make that happen sooner rather than later. And you see that Mr. Shakata is nodding his head because he remembers scrambling to make the facility and the staff available, and then that meant it was on the county, as I believe it should be, to, um, deliver the tests. I want to avoid that kind of, uh, problem, or perhaps anticipate and mitigate that kind of a problem on vaccines, which is why the van is, uh, so valuable, because if the, uh, and a van is to understate the case, if the, if the mobile medical clinic is available, then Ms. Buata is going to turn to the county, and I, I, uh, rarely speak for anyone else, let alone Ms. Buata. But Ms. Buata is going to turn to the county and say, great, now we've got a mobile medical van. What are you prepared to do to help us with getting the vaccine out in Palo Alto and other parts of the North County? Ms. Buata, did I put words in your mouth, uh, that I shouldn't have, or is that a pretty correct assessment of where things are headed?
Uh, yeah, very correct assessment, and, um, the mobile clinic is going to allow us to go beyond the fixed site, but we will be providing vaccines at the fixed site as well, so that is not, it's not, uh, it's both, rather than either or. And then, you know, just to clarify, the operational costs, uh, for, for operating the mobile clinic, uh, at, per year, two days a week, is almost three hundred thousand dollars. So, you know, the actual purchase of the mobile clinic provides us a, a facility that we can use for, you know, actually, you know, we, ten, twenty years, it's, even though, you know, the depreciated costs, you know, ends in about seven years, it's, they're usually good for a good ten to twenty years. And so, um, you know, we, we, we are going to be using this for the long term. It is not a short-term use. And we will be responsible for those operational costs. Like I said, if, if two days a week in Palo Alto is, right now, currently with current salaries, is about three hundred thousand dollars a year. And so that, it, it's not that, um, you know, the city is, is going to be paying the, you know, all of the cost for this, because what really matters is we start delivering the services.
Thank you both. Appreciate it. Member Koo.
Um, nice to meet you, Ms. Buata, and thank you, Mayor. Um, also, thanks for being here, Ms. Pell. So I, I'm really relieved and encouraged that, um, we're going forward with this. I'm just disappointed we didn't get to this earlier, so that would be at the fourth month now, and the van is here. You know, this whole week I've been working with the homeless and the, um, and the, um, lower-income folks, uh, serving meals to them, and many of them asked, you know, where can they go to get tested? And a lot of times, the places that I mentioned to them, even at Mitchell Park and at Stanford's drive-in, there's, there's no way for them to get there because they don't drive, and they have no, uh, way of finding a vehicle to take them there. So it's very, um, encouraging, and many of them actually are volunteers also, working at these jobs that do not, that they have to be there at the site themselves. So they also need the testing, so I'm very, very, um, relieved to hear that this is on its way, and also that the clinic itself here in Palo Alto is going to be also, administrating, administering the vaccine as well as the mobile van. So really encourage, and I'll be supporting this. Um, so again, thank you, and thank you to Supervisor Semidian. Now, I, I would like to, um, support, you know, the, the Vice Mayor's, um, comments about, uh, Life Moves and Hotel de zinc. You know, the forty-three thousand or so that, could, could not be allocated to them. I, I, I would like to encourage, you know, staff to find a way, um, to see how, in what areas, perhaps, we can allocate more of that funding to them, um, especially now that we have the, uh, it, it's kind of cold out there, and, and we do need more shelter beds, perhaps, in order to accommodate, um, and food. I know there's one shelter that is constantly looking for, um, they get a lot of volunteers donating dinners and food and doing laundry, but there's one area where they cannot find anybody to clean the showers. So that is something maybe staff can look into, espe- especially with the shelters. The last question I have is the, uh, project administration by the city, the hundred and forty-nine thousand, almost twenty percent of this funding. Do we have to take all twenty percent, the consultant that is involved? How much goes to, how much goes to a consultant? Is there any way to reduce it to like, say, ten percent?
So, this is money that we have, uh, that we collect to administer the program, and as you know, this year, we've had more expenses, uh, than we typically do. Uh, this money can be spent over the course of six years, um, to address our, um, uh, our program administration needs. I, I don't know that a lot of it, um, in typical years goes towards consultant services. This year, um, we're, we're going to run into that, and, uh, we're going to, this year, we'll probably need some fifty thousand dollars, sixty thousand dollars at least to, uh, finish out the year. The balance of that money, though, if the council did want to earmark it or, or make it as part of the next, uh, uh, NOFA opportunity, uh, we could do that. Part of it is, you know, we can reach out, and we do our outreach to, um, nonprofits and, and qualifying, um, agencies, but we can only act or respond to the applications that get filed. Um, and so that's, that's what we have right now. The, these two, um, applicants have, have come forward, and, um,
Okay. Well, thanks for explaining that, you know, um, I didn't realize the length of time the, the fees are used for. Um, the other thing is, when I was out, um, riding along with the fire department, I did notice that they do go out and respond to a lot of calls with, uh, homeless who may have COVID or may not, but, um, encourage them, if that's where, what they have to do to get the funding, please make sure that they are encouraged to provide an application as well. Because it's part of, it's part of the use of these funds is for responding to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. So, um, I hope all the departments are recognizing that as well.
Absolutely. So, let me also just be real clear that the services are being provided, whether they're funded by CDBG or the general fund. And so, uh, I think to your point, we will make sure that we are seeking appropriate eligible expenses to be reimbursed.
And I just want to say thank you for all of you coming so quickly together with this report.
Thanks, Councilmember Koo. You asked my main question about the administrative costs, so appreciate that. Okay, uh, seeing no other hands, I'll give you all a few seconds. Otherwise, I suggest we put this to a vote. Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Cormac, seconded by Councilmember Niss, to do the staff recommendation here and support this testing, uh, mobile van unit. Councilmember Cormac.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeBois.
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yes.
I mean, yes. Councilmember Niss. Councilmember Niss, I think you're on mute.
Yes.
Councilmember Koo.
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Thank you all so much. Councilmember Niss, I see your hand.
Just quickly, I, I'd like to thank Supervisor Semidian for, for being here, also for drawing this to our attention. And as I've said, I think it's really important for everyone on the council to understand the challenges of representing the north end of the county, and, and there are many. So, thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Supervisor. We, we truly appreciate it, and a- amen to everything you've just said, Liz. Okay, um, we now move to our adjournment. So if there's nothing else, I just want to wish you all Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Years. I hope none of you have any other city council or supervisory meetings the next few days, and enjoy some time with your family. With that, it's six oh one PM. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.